Good evening. At this time, I will call the meeting of Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone here this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda we have before us tonight? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item, which is Agenda Item Number Two, is the ceremonial swearing in of the elected officials who were elected last November. Because of COVID restrictions, the actual oath of office was given individually, but this will be the ceremonial swearing in, and I'll call on City Clerk Kyle Box to administer this oath of office.
Thank you, Mayor Burns. As you had stated, four officials for the city marshal will be needing to swear in tonight. That would be Mayor Burns, Councilmember Don Edblum, Councilmember Stephen Meister, and Councilmember Jim Lozinski. So if I could have you all rise, raise your right hand, and please repeat the text on the screen.
I, Robert Burns, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the state of Minnesota and the United States and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Marshall. So help me God. So welcome, the newly elected council members. Special welcome to Don Edblum, who previously served on the city council, then was not on the city council, and was elected, and this is his first meeting of this term. So welcome, Don.
Thank you.
We will proceed with the agenda then, and which Agenda Item Number Three will be considered the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on December 22, 2020. Council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they have been approved. We will move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Eve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LeBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number Four, this is a public hearing on the home property tax abatement request for 500 Elizabeth Street. So we'll conduct this public hearing, and then following the public hearing, we will consider the resolution that would approve the property tax abatement. We'll call on Sharon Hansen to conduct this public hearing. Or Sharon, do you have this?
I guess our city clerk is heading this one up.
Okay, Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor Burns. The last council meeting in December, the council called for a public hearing as needed to approve, for the city council to approve a tax abatement. Included in the background memo is the details on the property that the council will consider for abatement. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Is there any input as part of the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Eve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LeBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll now consider the resolution that would approve the home property tax abatement for 500 Elizabeth Street in Marshall. Are there any questions about the resolution?
Mayor, I believe one correction needs to be made. In paragraph 1.04, says that the hearing was conducted on December 22. I believe that should be today's date. With that correction, I believe that would be appropriate.
Thank you, Dennis, for that correction. Any other questions about the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Eve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LeBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items of the consent agenda up on the screen. And they include consider the resolution allowing for the modified numbering of all the resolutions and ordinance, consider the resolution designated the official depositories for city funds for 2021, consider the resolution delegating authority to the city to make electronic fund transfers, consider the approval of the resolution to authorize a finance director to pay certain claims, consider the resolution designating the official newspaper, the wastewater treatment facilities project, we have a payment application to Magni Construction, we consider the resolution authorize authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, consider the approval of the surplus to 2017 Ford Explorers for the Merit Center, we have the state of Minnesota amendment of the lease number four, consider the application for exempt permit for the Marshall Golf Club Incorporated, we have the City Hall Marshall Hotel change orders, consider the approval of the sale of alcoholic beverages at the Red Baron Arena in coordination with the Fairbanks Ice Dog Hockey Games, and then finally on the consent agenda are the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of a separate discussion?
Number six, please.
Any other item?
Number 15, please.
Other items? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LeBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number Six is the resolution declaring the official depositories for city funds. Jim?
I guess this question for Annette, on this, this is the bank that we use for all our check-in banking, correct?
This would be all of the ones that we are able to invest money with, whether that is our checking account and/or any other investments. It just simply states we're allowed to deposit money into any of the listed accounts or banks that are on this resolution.
Oh, it's listed to all those. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Eve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LeBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number Fifteen is the change orders for City Hall Hotel. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, and I bring it up with, on behalf of my fellow committee members, this is a significant change order amount, but as we've discussed in numerous City Hall meetings, the majority of this expense can be related to the hotel demolition. And again, I'd just like to publicly state that, you know, I think Councilman DeCramer, I think one time said that we've been talking about remodeling City Hall for probably 15 years and maybe longer, but the City Hall, or excuse me, the City Hotel has been there and has been an eyesore for probably 20 or 30 years. And as people realize, and Councilman Lozinski is a contractor, he knows well, when you start remodeling, you always run into unexpected expenses. And I think that's what we did with the hotel, and we ran into a lot of unexpected expenses with the demolition of the hotel. In order to be transparent with our city and the public, just let them know that, you know, the majority of these expenses are because of the hotel demolition. There are a few with the City Hall, but not very many, but again, just to be transparent within the city in case, you know, they're wondering why this significant change order, because again, sometimes change orders have a tendency to raise the hair on the back of people's heads. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if Councilman Lozinski or DeCramer want to add anything to that, but Councilman Lozinski is the chair of that committee, but he's done a great job, but just to bring transparency to this change order. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I will add to it, Russ. Thank you for pulling it. They call us a change order really isn't the correct terminology for this, because this is kind of more of an added-on project to City Hall, like Russ said. And if the council remembers, this originally started as a $577,000 change order, and we have it down to, I believe, a $420,000 and change, and then there's another little add-on, so to about $430,000, so with the committee. And we've put countless hours, and I'll say, working with our subs, working with our general contractor, double-checking their numbers. I will give Elliot Gutman credit, because he's, as many people know, he's very detail-oriented, and he has saved the city a tremendous amount of money going through the details of saying, well, if you're changing this, why are we not removing this cost? Because you're not doing it. So this has gone into, like I said, I don't want to call it a change order. I call this more of an added project. And we brought the cost of that project down through work by $140,000, too. I would say the committee together, just the committee probably has 25 hours into this, let alone the hours that the staff have into getting this down to, I think, to the bare bones to the taxpayers. So I want to give credit to all involved on that. And like I said, change order is not the right word. This was an added project, like Russ said, on removing an eyesore downtown and making our downtown a better place to be.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Russ, and thank you to the City Hall Committee, as was noted, they've really done a lot of work, but a lot of great work. And the result is, is we're going to have a project that the city can be proud of for probably generations to come because it's being done right. So thank you for your work.
Just, I would like to add a couple of comments to Jim's comments as well. Definitely compliment Elliot on the work he's done on this, but as well Ray Hendricks, and really all our contractor, our architect, really everybody did work on this. They made concessions, they made requests, they asked for more information, they got more detail, they worked on some pricing in some areas that seemed to be out of line. And really, this was very much a group effort, a very large group. So really, thanks to everyone in that, and including our city administrator who has volunteered to actually take up some equipment and do some construction if need be.
That's true.
So good. Any other input?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So my input is, I appreciate this. I appreciate Councilmember Lozinski saying this is an added-on. We knew that this was going to happen. Like Councilmember LeBatt said, the Marshall Hotel was an eyesore, it needed to come down. We, as a council, did everything we could to try to entertain developers to come in, but it was a nightmare for that, and it was probably a failing advertisement. And so I think we did the best thing that we could do, and I think we're getting a good deal on removing this and can go forward. So I vote approve. I vote, my recommendation is we all approve this change order, as much as I hate change orders.
I'll second that, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, okay, Mr. Mayor, I've got a comment, too, I'd like to make here. And I don't want to echo what everybody else has said on this, but I do want to remind people it was also a major, major fire hazard. There was a significant fuel source there that had that, anything gone bad there, that would have been catastrophic for City Hall and existing Main Street.
Thank you, Craig. For the record, the motion was made by Councilmember Meister, seconded by Jim, you seconded, right?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilmember Lozinski. Now, other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Eve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LeBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, consider the resolution approving the changes to the 2021 amended fee schedule. So do you have this?
Mr. Mayor, I believe in that Storm Finance Director, Finance Admin Director is on the call, but the majority of these fee changes are from Public Works, and I believe Jason Anderson can present the changes.
Jason, are you on the, in the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
We can.
Annette, before I begin, did you want to say anything?
Just a little background for the fee schedule resolution. Typically, we update this once a year during the budget process, and then throughout the year when we have these changes that are needed. So Jason can speak to the specific changes that are taking taking place on this update.
Hey, thank you, Annette. Jason Anderson, our Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose for these changes was largely driven by, you know, I think it's on page 104 of the packet, but largely driven by an upcoming item that we've got on the agenda for electronic bidding for our Public Works project. So you'll note under engineering there, we have a provision for what the fee will be for our contractors to submit bids on our street reconstruction projects and other large capital projects. That was the original intent to bring in this forward. Also, in conjunction with that, staff wanted to review on the next page, page 104, the engineering fees that we would charge in the event that we're billing our services out. Staff just felt like those could be bumped up to be a little more consistent with market rate. Naturally, we don't want to be using city staff on any sort of private development as much as possible. So I think it's important that our rates better reflect market rates. And then some other changes were made on page, I think it's 108 and 111. And I think those are due to the special assessment policy, which was recently updated. Go to 108. Yeah. So Councilman Bayer Kohler at the last committee meeting with Ways and Means when this is being reviewed, brought up that we had some incorrect language in this fee schedule that needed to be updated due to the update to the special assessment policy. So we went ahead and made those changes. On this sheet, there's the five items that are listed that should be reviewed on an annual basis to make sure that they are the assumptions that we want in our calculations in the policy. The one that really would probably get changed on a more regular basis is item number one, the residential maximum per parcel. If you go to page 111, it's just a striking of that appendix, as it no longer applies. These calculation procedures are now covered in the policy itself. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason and/or Annette?
Jason, just a question, and I don't recall us discussing it in committee. Did we already have that RT Vision software, or did we have to buy that?
We already have the One Office product and an Egram product. So we already have the infrastructure. The bid vault is kind of an add-on to that infrastructure that we're proposing to have our contractors pay for, by paying $25 per bid. So we already have their software. It's just a matter of signing an agreement saying we're going to use this component of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
My question is, when you upgraded the fees of city engineers to more market rate, is that an actual market rate? Because it goes up an engineer by 100%.
Yes, it's not uncommon to be actually over $200 an hour, $200 per hour for a senior engineer.
Yeah, just sounds like a lawyer.
Well, there's, naturally, that's not an hourly rate when they're billing it. There's markup on it. I just, I think it's important that our rate's not too cheap, I guess. I'll put it that way. We don't want to be in the business of using our services outside of city projects. And of course, we always reserve the right to say no, but it's nice if the price is a little more reflective, in my opinion.
And John?
As we discussed this in Ways and Means, it's intentionally on the high side, just for the reason that the city of Marshall is not in the engineering business and in the business to hire outer engineers for probably more private work. So this is intended to be rather high, but there are actually some of the things that we've seen in regards to City Hall, these rates are very much market.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a question for clarity is that if it's a special assessment project and a property owner chooses to have their own engineer do the work in lieu of paying that charge, would we charge for reviewing that engineer's work?
So to clarify, on our projects where there's special assessments, these rates will not impact those at all. We charge our special assessment projects by a percentage. It's listed at the top, 16% of the project costs. That's what we bill for engineering services. That's also a fairly common practice to bill based on percentage of contract. As far as review, you know, if you're going to be doing a project in the community here and you submit plans for a development, let's say, or a new road that we would eventually take over, we don't bill those, and we don't intend to bill for review. This is more for if our services are supplanting those of an engineer that you've hired.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
Just, I'd like to add in one thing that Jason brought up that, just make a point, the engineering fees do not change when working with MMU as well. Those are also based on the 16% of project costs. So the rates that are listed have no effect on MMU's billing for engineering services.
That's a good clarification. Thank you, John. So in reality, it's hard to come up with a example where this rate would actually be applied.
In recent memory, it has not been applied. It has in the past, but it's very rare.
Okay, any other questions?
I move approval of the resolution approving specific fees charged by the city of Marshall.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Eve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LeBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Agenda Item Number Nineteen is consider the approval of the extension of the COVID-19 temporary employee leave policies. When we, I'll call Sheila Dubs, HR Director, but just as a bit of introduction, at our last meeting, Congress had not yet acted on the bill that was relevant to this item that was actually approved by Congress, signed by the President, just prior to the first end of the year. So it was after our last council meeting. And because we weren't going to have a regular council meeting until January 12, I did sign an extension under our emergency powers to extend this until the council could address this issue at their regular meeting. So that's one of the reasons it's on the agenda this evening. So with that, as well as an explanation of the issue, I'll call on Sheila Dubs, Human Resources Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So I'll start maybe by giving some basic background on this, just for those of you. It's been a while since the council has reviewed this. So the Families First Coronavirus Act was approved by the legislature in early 2020, and the council was mandated to also approve that act and institute two policies for our employees as a result of that. So we have been in compliance since the institution of that act. That act expired, as the marriage has said, on December 31 of 2020. With the expiration of that, Congress has noted that the new relief bill offers an opportunity for employers to voluntarily, if they wish, continue to administer the COVID leave benefits in the same way that the Families First Coronavirus Act was administered. So employers are not mandated to, but they can voluntarily administer that in the same fashion. If the council decides to discontinue the policy, it would, that would be effective immediately. And full-time and part-time employees would then be left to using any accruals that they currently have. Part-time employees are not eligible for leave accruals. So if a part-time employee were to experience COVID either themselves or within their household or an effect of COVID on a daycare situation, for instance, or a hybrid learning model for school-aged children, part-time employees would be taking unpaid leave from the city of Marshall. Full-time employees would be using their accruals, their leave balances from any of the accruals that we offer with the exception of funeral leave. So they could use their sick leave, vacation leave, compensatory time, any of that would certainly be permitted to be used going forward. Alternatively, if the council wishes to provide an extension of these policies, it would be a continuation of the leave benefits. That's what the Congress has laid out in the guidance for employers coming into 2021. So it is not a resetting of any of the leave balances. It is a continuation. And I'll give you an example of that. If an employee were to have used 40 hours of their leave under that act in 2020, they would still have 40 hours available to them to use today because 80 hours were permitted under the act. If an employee exhausted all 80 hours, they would not have any time left. So it's a continuation, not a resetting of the benefits for employees. The policies were originally developed by Congress to protect the financial security of families and to mitigate the spread of the virus. If the council chooses to extend these policies, I believe that those reasons would continue to serve the purpose. If the council decides to discontinue the policies, again, we, as staff, would encourage employees to continue to report illnesses, household instances related to COVID, and continue to either isolate or quarantine at home, but they would be required to utilize their own leave balances or be on unpaid leave time if it wasn't, if it wasn't a part-time employee. Staff have done several measures during this past year to try to assist employees through the experiences of COVID. If the council does not approve continuation of the policies this evening, staff do recommend that we be permitted for full-time employees that they continue to be able to utilize their sick leave accruals in a more flexible fashion. In 2020, employees were permitted to use their sick leave if their daycare closed due to a COVID illness, or if a child's school closed due to a COVID illness within the classroom. So we would ask for flexibility for that to continue so that employees can use their sick leave balances for that. Under our existing leave policies, under the normal policy manual, those exceptions would fall under vacation pay, not sick leave. So we would just be asking for those concessions. In your background materials, I did a really brief couple survey questions to all of our comparison. a really brief couple of survey questions to all of our comparable cities. What I put into your packet, there were two unanswered questions there from a couple of cities, and I followed up today with those. So there's two changes to that. North Mankato has expired their COVID policies, and St. Peter has also expired their policies. However, St. Peter has has adopted somewhat of a different type of, of policy for employees who have utilized all of their sick, their vacation and their comp time accruals. If all of that is gone and an employee needs time off due to COVID, the City of St. Peter has instituted what's called an extended illness bank where they're offering forty hours of pay for a full-time employee and then prorated for part-time so that, trying to encourage those employees not to report to work just because they don't have any leave accruals left. But for the remaining, the seven cities and Lyon County, they have all expired the COVID policies and employees are required to utilize their own leave accruals. Only the City of Hutchinson and Northfield have continued those policies. And you can see Hutchinson has a deadline of March thirty first on theirs. I think I'll stop there and, and certainly I can answer any questions that the council might have about policies themselves.
Thank you, Sheila. John?
Yes. Either by a rough percentage or rough number of employees, how many of our employees made use of this policy?
Okay, I have both of that available for you. We had thirty-one employees use the emergency paid sick leave, and one employee used the emergency FMLA leave under that act. So thirty-two employees total have used the leave under the act.
And just a clarification on that, was that all of the eighty hours or just part of the eighty hours?
We, that was part of the eighty hours. We have actually only had five employees exhaust the eighty hours. And this is with all of our employees, including paid-on call, because everyone was eligible for it under the act. So that's a hundred and sixty-three employees.
Good.
So out of a hundred and sixty-three, thirty-two used it. Five have exhausted their emergency paid sick leave, which is eighty hours.
Thank you, Sheila. Other questions from the council?
Yes, Sheila, in, in this order, and I haven't read through the whole order, are we as a city reimbursed at all for these costs? Or is this a cost that they made the, they made the mandate and we have to pick up the cost?
The city is not going to be reimbursed for any costs. The League of Minnesota Cities sent lobbyists two different times to the legislature to try to get a tax credit. And the legislature declined that both times. Municipalities, any, any public employers, really. All public employers were exempted from tax credits. Only private, nonprofit employers were permitted to apply for the tax credits on this benefit. So we are not reimbursed for this. It could be eligible for our Sharon, if you could give me the right verbiage for that, for the, for the aid that we were extending. The aid that the city received was used for other purposes, so it couldn't be used for this. So it could have been eligible for that, but we are not eligible for tax credits.
And there was not a new allocation of CARES Act funding that was made available to the city?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Good question. Jim, other, other questions, other input?
Mr. Mayor, I just, you know, I, I really think that we need to continue this, looking at the potential with, with the the, the, the chance of having employees discouraged from being candid about not feeling well or not being well and the potential other impacts it could have to the city. I think it's a small risk for us to take to fend off a, I think, a more significant risk in having coverages. And I don't think we can cherry pick different departments and divisions to do this because every one of them has a needed function or we wouldn't have them.
Other?
Yeah, Craig, I, I agree with you, but I would like to shorten the timeframe to March thirty-first and revisit it at that time because we can always extend it. But my hopes and dreams are by March thirty-first, a lot of this, and I know Dr. Meister will answer that later, but we have a lot more vaccines in arms than we can let it expire March thirty-first. But we can always extend it. I mean, it's easy to extend it, but I'd support something going up to March thirty-first.
Yeah, and I wasn't making a motion. I just wanted to put a support into, to carry it on. And I, I would absolutely be in favor of that same thing that revisited again at the, at the end of March.
Other input from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would like to see, again, I agree with March thirty-first, but I would like to see the time being used for daycare or school closures only.
So my, my take is going to come from my medical background. As we are going through this pandemic, COVID is becoming kind of like influenza. And at some point in time, theoretically, we're going to be facing this every year for the foreseeable future. You know, once the vaccine comes out, the more people get, that get vaccinated, the more people that are protected from it. There are going to be those who choose not to get vaccinated, and that's the way it is. What the city does now, correct me if I'm wrong, Sheila, is if you get the flu and you're out of work, you use your regular leave, right? No, no special stuff. So I think going into this, I would lean towards siding with council members, Wazinski and Schaefer, to give us a chance to get everything up and running as far as vaccinations. And then after that, if we need to look at it, depending on where we are with the vaccines, I'd be probably leaning towards what Councilmember Lebat's suggestion was and doing it for the daycare and school closures that are like we have now when you have an epidemic of flu, which is usually because our vaccine at that point in time didn't work. So that's, that's the scientific background of it. And hopefully, we have the, the COVID vaccine on board with many, many people by March thirty-first.
Thank you. Are there, any other input? If not, what is the direction of the council?
I would make a motion to extend it to the date of March thirty-first and let it expire after that.
I will second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion?
While I'm not on the council, I would, I would just look at the calendar. Maybe just March twenty-third is a better date. That's a council meeting. If you go to the thirty-first, then you have to let the mayor make a decision to extend it by executive order. Maybe go to the last meeting in March, which would be the twenty-third.
Um, I'm fine with that. I'll amend my motion to March twenty-third. That doesn't make sense. Dennis, thank you. So I'll amend my motion to March twenty-third.
That'd be okay. Okay, the motion's been amended by the makers. I've been also in agreement. Now, discussion on that motion.
Just a question on the motion. Is that for the policy as it's written now or just for daycare and school closures?
As the policy is written now.
Yes.
So if you used up your hours in my, like Sheila said, you've used up your hours. So it is as the policy is written now.
And if I can clarify that a bit, the Congress has been clear to date. Additional guidance may be coming. But to date, if this is approved as an extension, we, we are required to administer this the same way that we had administered this in 2020. So utilizing emergency paid sick leave only for daycares or school closures would not be in compliance with that act. So I will need to continue to comply with the administration guidance of the act if it's extended.
And, and I'd like to comment on that if I could, Mr. Mayor. I think that excluding the actual employee illness would, would somehow, I think, hand tie us about having the sick employees not report to work. I, I like it as it's written, and I think the, the inclusion of the, the daycare and school closures is a secondary issue about approving leave on medical or other FMLA or other accrued PTO.
So as it is now, and as the motion needs to be, it's an extension of the, the current policy. And of course, that will be then, there'll be opportunity for reviewing that. Once time goes on, we all learn more. Sharon?
Is this better? All right, sorry about that. Similar to what I think Councilmember Schaefer and and Meister are projecting is that one of our discussions with staff and supportingness is we don't want COVID-positive employees coming into work because they don't have existing sick leave or they want to save their sick leave. So we really do see this as a mutual benefit for the employee and employer in implementing this because there's still that risk out there of, of COVID. So and obviously, the, the secondary effects of daycare and schooling, of course, has had some impact. I do think the statistics of usage that Sheila pointed out kind of correlates pretty well with what we've seen in terms of positive cases from City of Marshall. And so it seems like the policy did work in 2020, and hopefully that'll continue in 2021 if we have that situation come up again. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other input or discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on that motion. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
Don DeCraman?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
No.
Jim Wazinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number twenty. This is the project on West Redwood Street, West Marshall Street Reconstruction Project. The the action would be to consider the resolution that would approve the plans and specification and ordering the advertisements for the bids. I'll call on Jason Anderson, City Engineer Director, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. We have prepared plans and specifications for our North First Redwood and Marshall Street Utility Reconstruction Project. We're now prepared to put out these plans for, for bid and solicit bids. So this is the process to gain your approval. To do so, with your approval, we begin advertising by the end of this week, and we would be back to the council at the first meeting in February, hopefully with a, a pile of good bids and a recommendation. So our current engineer's estimate is around one point four million when you figure in engineering and contingency. This project is funded through our standard process with the special assessment policy. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Are there questions about the resolution?
I move approval. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? Here we go. We'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
Don DeCraman?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
No.
Jim Wazinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number twenty-one is the Public Works Division Electronic Bidding Policy. This was referenced before, but I will call on Jason Anderson for the request. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we, we talked about this briefly during the fee schedule discussion. But the Engineering Department and the Public Works Division would like to begin utilizing electronic bidding for our capital improvement projects, starting with the one that we just approved to go forward for bids. RT Vision, our software provider for our project management software, has the BidVault program available that allows us to do this. Essentially, a contractor views our plans and specifications the same way that they always have through our website that we have available. They can do that for free, so they can get all information, all updates, amendments and addendums for free. But we are proposing to now move to the BidVault process for actually submitting a proposal sheet. The old method had them print out proposal sheets, fill them out by hand, do the math, put it into an envelope and bring it to us for the bid opening. With BidVault, the contractor would, through the online interface, request an access key. And once they do that, they'll be prompted to pay a twenty-five-dollar user fee plus processing fees, which we can liken to credit card fees. You pay those fees and then you gain, you gain the right to, to use the program and enter your numbers. The program ensures that you have all the steps completed and ensures that you acknowledge all the addendums that may have been issued. You, it ensures you're using the proper proposal sheet. The program does all the math for you, so there's no math error or tabulation error. And then, of course, you can submit it instantaneously minutes before the bid as opposed to having to try to bring it down to City Hall. We think that this is a, a service that adds tremendous value to our process. At Ways and Means, it was discussed if we had reached out to any of our local contractors, and at that point, we had not. But Friday afternoon, after that meeting, we did submit, send out an email to all local contractors who've won a, a contract in the last few years and asked for any input, and we've received none. Leading up to this, we have had one contractor in particular voice support for this process and has actually requested it for a few years now. So once again, we, we think the twenty-five-dollar fee is a, a small fee to pay for the, the benefit of using this program, and it is cheaper for us to administer the program this way. If we have to pay for it on our own end, the costs are, are higher, typically two hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars, depending on how many paid items we have in our project. So staff would like to have, would like the council to approve our, our policy and the rate that we're proposing. Ways and Means and PIT Committee met on Friday and discussed and both motioned in favor.
Thank you, Jason. Are there questions for Jason?
I move approval.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And seconded by John. And John, do you have a discussion item?
A discussion item. Just note that the twenty-five-dollar fee does not go to the city. It goes to the company that's handling the, the BidVault software. And as Jason said, and you know, in our discussion, we went through this, it's we're doing this in a manner that is the, the best pricing for the city as far as what we believe that otherwise, there's a fee, an overall fee to do each bid. This way, the company takes on the responsibility of that and just collects the twenty-five dollars from each bidding unit. So but again, that does not go to the city.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could add to, to John's comment, that's exactly right. And we had that same discussion at PINT and, and, you know, like at a two hundred and fifty-dollar kind of a median project, it would take ten bidders to the city to come up with that. And then for the city to recover the two hundred and fifty dollars, if that's the median project, we'd still have to, to recoup that twenty-five dollars per bidder. And on the projects that are more complicated and cost two hundred and fifty dollars, if there's only four bidders, they only collect a hundred dollars, and that's on the company and that. Obviously, they're walking into that knowing that, and I think it's a lot better for us if they're willing to take it to put that on them, and then we're out of that.
Well, the other advantage, and good comment, Craig, the other advantage of this is over the years, we've had we've had examples where bids have been submitted and then there was a mistake. The, either a mathematical mistake or a contractor had overlooked something and then requested leniency from the council. It always was kind of a hard call on is that fair when someone, you know, did the math wrong or not? And so this will probably be good for both contractors and the city because it eliminates that. And it will also probably save some time for city staff in reviewing the details of the bids because that has been done by the BidVault program. Other input?
If I could add?
Yes, John.
Also believe that this is going to be a savings to the companies, the construction companies doing the bids because it is a twenty-five-dollar fee that they have not had to pay in the past, but they've had to pay for either getting a packet to the office in time, which many times we talked about to involve someone driving it down, waiting, reviewing everything the last the last minute to get it in. And that took time and, you know, transportation costs, labor costs for them. So, this is actually a, we believe this to be an advantage to the construction companies because they know they're getting the latest of the revisions, their math is correct, and everything is submitted online. They can do this same way we're sitting here doing it now.
Any other input?
Jason, how do you handle bid security, the bid bond? Certain percentage has to accompany the bid. How is that handled?
Yeah, there's an additional, kind of a side program called the Surety 2000 or something, I forget the name of it, but there is a component for validating bid security as well. That's one piece that we're going to work with. Any, we'll put some information out on our website right away, try to make it very clear to all of our contractors to get signed up with the surety program as well, to make sure that they're not trying to submit a bid on the last day and they haven't created the profiles that they need to create. So, there is a program for that. And if you have more questions on specifics, Dennis, we can maybe talk about that this week yet. And Jesse Dean, Assistant City Engineer, is very familiar with the process. He can bring you in.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda I of number 22, the Sidewalk Replacement Cost Participation Policy. Once again, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This is kind of, in my mind, a housekeeping item. Since 2012, we've had the most current iteration of our sidewalk cost participation policy in place. We've typically budgeted, at least in recent years, $10,000 in the street department's budget towards covering these costs if residents or property owners replace sidewalk panels. The city has, since this time, participated in a 50-50 match, up to $500 of city cost contribution. The only stipulation was that the work be ADA compliant and that a permit be taken out. We're now just looking at the policy and making some amendments and looking to adjust the level of participation. Staff is proposing first to increase the amount up to $750. It's been eight or nine years here without a change, and we think increasing the amount would be advantageous. We'd also like to change the way that we, and the method of our participation. We'd like to participate by paying $2.50 per square foot of sidewalk being replaced, regardless of any other factors. This kind of keeps us out of being put in the middle between homeowners and contractors and pricing concerns. We feel like this is pretty close to a 50-50 type of cost contribution for competitive sidewalk work. It might be a little bit on the low end, but it is a matching program, and this will offer a pretty, pretty good benefit. We had it written up originally as $10 per linear foot, but committee, PIT Committee suggested that we amend it to reflect a square foot cost participation, and staff believes that makes a lot of sense. So, PIT recommends to bring this forward, staff does as well. The only other change I'll add is that if you're a property owner that owns multiple properties, we do cap in the policy our participation at up to three properties of max participation. We just want to make sure that there's enough money in the program every year to help fund multiple property owners' ventures and not just one. So, staff would recommend that we approve these changes, and I'd be happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Jason. One quick question, though, just kind of clarification. This would be, first off, I think this is a good policy. I think the, we should probably promote this policy so homeowners are, that have sidewalks are aware of this cost participation. My question would be, is, would this be available to non-residential properties? I have an example I'll use that would be helpful.
Staff would propose that this policy applies to all properties in the community because we believe that any investment in improving the sidewalk anywhere in town on any property is valuable, whether it be a residential or a commercial property. So, staff would propose that it's for, it's for all properties. And we would also, I should have mentioned, we do plan to advertise this out to the public a little more following this amendment if it's passed. We'd like to use city social media and try to spread the word a little bit.
So, the example would be, and I'll use Long Charles 3 Pilar property where the sidewalk is broken up, and that would, that would then be subject to the cap because probably more sidewalk than, than what, we'd hit the limit there.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. Other questions for Jason?
I would just like to add there, and we had quite a discussion over the linear foot and the square foot, and the reason we changed from that is we have sidewalks in Marshall that are four feet wide, we have sidewalks that are five feet wide. You go in front of Cruz Motors, I believe their sidewalk is eight feet wide. So, we thought the square footage would be the fairest way so people aren't, you know, we're not competing between four, five, six, eight-foot sidewalks. That's why we, as the PIT, suggest a switch into the square footage.
Other input?
I, Mr. Mayor, I'm confused by this because, again, we want people to get their sidewalks up to par. There are so many places that the sidewalks are just frankly unsafe. And one question I have for Jason is how many of these sidewalk replacements have been, how many residents have contacted staff and said, "Come on, let's fix this sidewalk, and I want you 50%?"
Can you clarify that question for me, Councilmember?
In the past four years, how many residents have come and said, "I need my sidewalk fixed, let's fix it and utilize the 50-50 split"?
Okay. The program's fairly well-used. I would say that it could be used, it's probably more. A lot of folks find out about it after the fact, and that's why we need to do a better job of promoting it. But I would say there's a handful of residents a year, somewhere between five and 10 property owners, that use this program.
And since we have 10,000 budgeted, and how much of that 10,000 over the past four years has been used on average?
You know, I'm a little unprepared to answer that, but I would say that we probably have rarely, if ever, exhausted the budget allotment, but I think that if we do a little better job of advertising it, we might, we might do a little better there.
Okay, so that would be my, that would be my hope, is that people get it. And I don't know if we have some way to have residents notified that their sidewalk stinks. You know, however we do that, somebody knock on the door, put a tag on their window or door, mail them something from staff saying, "We've noted that your sidewalk is heaving. It needs to be replaced. Here's a program that helps us." You know, again, I would also argue that at some point in time, you know, there's several council members that want sidewalks put everywhere. I'm not in favor of that, but if we do go that way, I think that we should, as a city, take responsibility for the sidewalks. I mean, it's just an easy thing because we're in wintertime. Luckily, we don't have too much snow, but in the past couple of snows, I have certainly noted sidewalks that are not plowed, not opened up, not maintained. In the summertime, there's heaving sidewalks, in the wintertime, they're heaving too, and people aren't taking care of them. Well, if we're going to mandate sidewalks, then you have to mandate maintenance of the sidewalks. That's my argument.
Thank you, Steve. Other input? If not, do you have the recommendation on the replacement cost participation policy? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the policy.
Motion by John, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Just one item, I would ask that the $2.50 per square foot be added to the fee schedule item so it gets reviewed each year.
Yep, good suggestion. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Agenda I of number 23, the update to the city's streets functional classification map. Jason, this, I'll call on Jason Anderson, this is also probably one of, a housekeeping item also. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This is largely a housekeeping item. City engineering staff has taken some time to review our functional classification map. We've just identified some changes to the map that we feel should be made. There's really not much impact to making these changes for anybody in this room. It's largely a procedural thing for city engineering staff and MINDOT and the local regional planning agency. There are some grants that apply to maybe collector routes, and that's where this might weigh in. Otherwise, I think this is pretty limited impact. And our future road standards, when we talk about road widths and different, different things like that, we will plan to tie those to local collector and arterial routes. So, that's kind of where this plays in. But we used FHWA guidance when reviewing this, and that's what the tables are based on. Obviously, the local roads serve the majority of the community, and they're access-driven. So, most homes are in this community, and most properties are on local roads. The collector routes distribute traffic from those local networks to the arterials, and the arterials in Marshall are state highways. So, the table identifies the percentages of miles in Marshall that are identified in each manner, and there's a current table and a proposed table. And there's also maps included in your packet. I don't, I don't think I'll go through the specifics of that today, but if there are any questions about any of this, I can answer them. We also took this to PIT, and they all motioned in favor.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Questions? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move to Agenda I of number 24, Consider the Introduction of the Ordinance Amending Chapter Two, Article Six, Division Six, the Human Rights Commission. This has been the subject of quite a few meetings, quite a bit of discussion. Councilmember De Kramer, myself, Sharon Hansen, Kyle Fox, as well as others, have been working with this on a, with a group of interested folks and really what this introduction is, is an ordinance that is a updating of a Human Rights Commission ordinance that has been on the books for some time, but was more, more tied to the historic state human rights responsibilities that had been at one time delegated locally, and that is no longer the case, nonetheless, there is a role for welcoming and human rights within the city. So, that was the intention here. With that, I'll turn to Kyle, and you can provide any other explanation, and then, again, the action would be the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Burns. Yes, as you'd stated, we had been, we have been meeting since early fall as a small group of individuals, including staff and council members. It's rewarding work to be a part of this, to be a part of this group, and a lot of work has gone into just drafting this draft ordinance tonight, as well as working on mission and vision statement and defining our guiding principles. So, looking forward to the work to come on this, and as you stated, this is just the introduction tonight, and then hopefully to follow at the next regular meeting would be the adoption of the amendment, as well as the appointments to the commission.
John or Sharon, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, just, I would make a motion to approve the introduction of the ordinance.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Steve. Now, discussion on the motion on introduction? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda I of number 25, Consider Appointments in Various Boards, Commissions. We have a opening on the Planning Commission. We've had one applicant, the, and again, we're, because of the COVID restrictions we have, we're unable to do the full interviews, so I will make the recommendation that James McClinsky be appointed to an expired term that will expire May 31, 2023 on the Planning Commission. Offer that as a recommendation to the council, entertain a motion to approve.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? The only item on the discussion is that I believe there's at least one, perhaps two, or one more opening that will be coming up on the Planning Commission within the next few months. And like I said, we had one applicant, so we're in probably need of, if anyone's interested in serving for applicants, that will be coming up soon.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When we're, because of COVID restrictions, we're not able to formally interview them historically. Are we able to start doing Zoom meetings for interviewing them? I mean, they're willing to do it, I just don't see why.
Yeah, that actually would be a good possibility.
Yeah, I think we should start doing that again.
Good, good suggestion. Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to council reports. Actually, I will start this, this evening, and then, and then, once we go through the reports, then I'll come back and have some additional items under individual. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need to do the appointments to various committees first?
That's what we just thought. Yep.
I thought it was council appointments.
Yeah, now we're on the council appointments. So, 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 thank you to the council members for your service on different boards and commissions, as well, as well as council committees and liaisons. And, you know, based on your input, based on trying to have a sense of balance, and I also appreciate, you know, the, we had kind of a first draft that went out there, and we were able to, with input, make some good clarifications to that. And probably, you know, I guess my, my hope here was to, you know, spread the work where not only there was interest on individual council members, but there was also a balance on, you know, whatever time commitments might be. So, you have before you the updated, and this was, by the way, it was updated this afternoon, so Equipment Review Committee, Don Edboom, Craig Schaefer, Jim Lozinski, Public Improvement Transportation, Craig Schaefer, Russ LaBatt, Jim Lozinski, Legislative Ordinance, Steve Meister, John De Kramer, Jim Lozinski, Ways and Means Committee, John De Kramer, Russ LaBatt, Don Edboom, Personnel Committee, Steve Meister, Craig Schaefer, John De Kramer. Most of those had very little changes to them, with the exception of Don joining and previously, Councilmember Bear Coler was not on there. The liaison positions, we, based on your requests and based on trying to balance things out, there have been some changes. The Adult Community Center Commission, the Liaison, Russ LaBatt, Airport Commission, Craig Schaefer, Charter Commission, there's no liaison. I would note, though, that Don Edboom is an appointed member by the District Court Judge on the Charter Commission, Community Services Advisory Board, Steve Meister, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Russ LaBatt, Economic Development Authority, Steve Meister and John De Kramer, Joint Law Enforcement Center Management Committee, Jim Lozinski, Craig Schaefer. Center Management Committee, Jim Lozinski, Craig Schaefer, Library Board, Russ La Bat, Marshall Area Transit Committee, Russ La Bat, Marshall Municipal Utilities Commission, John De Kramer, the Merit Center Commission, Craig Schaefer, Planning Commission, Don Edboom, Police Advisory Board, Jim Lozinski, Public Housing Commission, Don Edboom, Southwest Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission, Craig Schaefer, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, John De Kramer. Not listed on, on these would be several. One would be the Ad hoc Committee for the City Hall Committee, which of course will continue with the same members. The, that group will largely complete their work when the City Hall project is completed, and that should be mid-year twenty-twenty-one. Also not listed on there is, as we have a comprehensive plan review of the consultants that have come in, we'll be forming a committee, and I would ask that there be the liaison from the council to the Planning Commission, and a liaison from the EDA serve on that. You two can kind of arm wrestle which one of you would want to be on that later at this, so. And then, we will also need, at a later date, the, someone that would be, I'll call it a liaison, but it would almost be a working member on the hundred and fiftieth yet-to-be recruited committee. So we should really have a council connection to that, and of course, the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the city of Marshall does happen in twenty-twenty-two, so it is coming up. I think I covered everything. So with that, questions? Disagreements? Otherwise, not even sure it's necessary to have a motion, but I think it would be.
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve to approve the appointments?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, the, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ La Bat?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And a motion passes. Once again, thank you, everyone. You know, this is where a lot of good work is done, and I, you know, sincerely appreciate the work that everybody does on the council committees and the Commission Board liaisons, which is our next report, is the Commission Board Liaison Report. And I'll start from Southwest Regional Development Commission. They have not met since we last met, but as I've said previously, a lot of their work right now, or a lot of my work on there, has to do with the both revolving loan funds or traditional revolving loan fund and the COVID revolving loan fund, and they continue to meet. The Southwest Regional Development Commission does have their monthly full commission meeting will be held this Thursday afternoon. With that, Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I have nothing to report from my boards, commissions, and, and committees.
And Steve?
Likewise, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Don, you would be next, but I'm going to skip by you this evening. Russ?
CBB and police have not met, but library met last night. We elected a new chairperson or president. Michael Murray is the new, new president, and Linda Vaughn is the new vice president. Welcome. I know we, we approved Anita Gaul last month, but Paul Gropman is the new member on the board representing the county, and there still is one more countywide position open on the board. The other thing that, that continues to be, and I've talked about it in the past year, is they had a geothermal pump blow up. They actually blew the top right off of it, so one of those, that heat pump will need to be replaced at the tune of about seven thousand dollars, and, and then also another compressor needs to. So as that building ages, I'm not sure what's going on with all the geothermal, but it continues to cause problems, and I'm not sure what can be done, but Michelle is just keeping it, keeping us informed of what's going on. She also made, made a good presentation up at the state level regarding Plum Creek and, and the, the request for additional funding for Plum Creek, and it was, hopefully that'll happen in the, in the new budget with the state. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. John?
EDA or MNU did not meet, however, there was a subcommittee of the EDA that met regarding the resiliency grants. Those have, not exactly sure of the number, I want to say about twenty-eight to thirty businesses that have applied for those grants, and I suspect that most of those may have been paid out already.
Okay, thank you. And Jim?
The only committee of mine that met and board was City Hall Committee, and we're getting to be really good friends on that committee. We did meet twice, and as you can see, that we, we came forward with the stuff to council, a lot of hours, a lot of work in that. Update on city halls, the brick, excuse me, I believe it's the stoneworkers going on the bottom. Drove by there today. We have windows going in the back, so hopefully, we will well start to see finished product on the outside soon, so it looks like progress. Inside, it's clipping long. I believe they're sheet rocking on the upper floor and getting it taped. So City Hall, correct me if I'm wrong, fellow committee members, but I believe they said they are still on schedule. They have that finished toward the end of April, first part of May. So it is going well.
Thank you, Jim.
Just to add to that, Mr. Mayor, I was down there today. They are installing the elevator as well, so, and we keep getting our, keep requesting of our chairman to have meetings in Florida, but he hasn't brought that up yet, so.
Oh, he did, he did meetings on Friday from Florida. I don't know, you, you weren't invited. You were at that. We met in Florida. We did, we watched the rocket go up, remember?
Well, we'll, we'll move along then to council member individual items. Craig, let's start at your head.
Okay, well, thanks. Jim and I had actually spoken earlier this week, and it was kind of the, the odds call of the mayor on a subject that we both have discussed and wanted to bring forward, so I'm going to start this, but Jim, feel free to step in. And the conversation is, is about the, the press release that came out from CJ yesterday about their, their large expansion announced in Sioux Falls. And of course, we've known in the background that they're looking at, at a lot of additions to the CJ Swan Company, and, and I personally, and I think at the city, we're excited about all of the endeavors of CJ and their presence in Marshall and their commitment to their, to the company and to their assets. And I have no delusion that, that Marshall was ever in the hunt for one, what went into Sioux Falls. But I do think that we need to continue to take a strong look at efforts, even though we've been taking kind of a timeout or a step back with COVID. We had a good pace going for fixing one of the strong needs that I think we have in this community, and that's affordable housing, including what I call transition housing for new young professionals, along with a strong workforce. And I don't think we should take a breath on that. One of the discussions, I believe, that the county board has advertised that they're having public input meetings again to decide how they go with EDA, and I think we need, as a city, need to maintain a dialogue with the county. We either partner or get a decision on where they're going to go, so we know how to go alone. But I think as a region, we're crazy if we're not looking at that as a region, because we know that Marshall being the, the regional center, we still rely on the viability and are completely connected to the viability of, of all of our neighboring communities. And so I just think that we need to keep that on the burner. I know that our project, you know, the new units, the three units proposed out along, off of what I call Legion Field Road, but I can't think of the name of the projects, but we, we know those three-story nice units that have been put out there. We need to encourage that to continue. And I guess I would encourage Sharon, I don't know where we're at with Block Eleven, if, if that's dead or not, but, you know, we've got some good potentials here, and I think as, as things roll out, we're a lot more optimistic about twenty-one than we were early summer of twenty, and I just would really like to see us continue to push that out, and I'll stop there.
Um, Craig, you pretty much covered our, our forty-five minute conversation today. I had the same conversation Sharon after I talked to you, and Sharon and I chatted that we need to, we need to work with the county. We need to encourage them to work with us, because I believe you said it many times, Craig. What's good for Marshall is good for the county. And I just, you know, I, I was disappointed, really, not about CJ's, because it'd be hard to, I'd love to land that in Marshall, but six hundred jobs, we, we need to get the workforce here first, but then around the, I read on the bottom of the paper, but the county's still discussing the EDA, and I think that's been going on for six months. And I know, Bob, I believe you'll be at that meeting, and I don't know how we can all work on encouraging the county. We want to work with them. We want to have them become part of us, but I agree with you, Craig. If they're not going to, we need to move forward and keep our EDA going.
Right, and Jim, and like we talked before, and I'm going to get on my soapbox again, we've missed some opportunities here as a community in the recent past for business, and, and I don't know, hindsight is twenty-twenty. I don't know, you know, if it would have been exactly what we were looking for, or thought it was, but we missed opportunities, and I think a part of this is not only having the infrastructure and the items in the plan, but it's also the dialogue. And like you said, what's good for Marshall is good for the county, but what's good for the county is good for Marshall, too. So it's a reciprocal, I, I, I would say it's a symbiotic relationship if we, if we work it right, and we need to, to, to not follow the national model, but follow our local model, and we need to cooperate and stop pushing against each other and figure out how to make this thing work. And, and I think the iron is hot right now. If the county's into planning, let's help them plan. So Bob, I know that, that I know that you're a positive forward on that, and I'm, I'm grateful that you're going to be attending and voicing for Marshall and Sharon. I know that you have good connection, and, and I know that, that you're on the end and are also a, a great and perfect advocate for this, but know that, that there's council support here, too, to keep moving on this. We need to, to move Marshall forward. If we don't move forward, we're dying.
I will, thanks, Craig. Thanks, Jim. I'll speak a little bit more on this later, but just in reference to the, the County EDA facilitation meeting, yes, for Wednesday evening and Thursday meeting, Thursday evening, there are meetings scheduled, and I'll be in attendance. Councilmember De Kramer, you will be, be there. Sharon will be there. I think Lauren Dykes will be there. However, we've been asked to only have one voice, because each community, regardless of size of the community, only has one voice. So the, but it would be a facilitated discussion, and I am in agreement that, you know, we either need to move forward together, or we just simply need to move forward. So with regards to the CJ announcement, the CEO, Demetria Smirnoff, did call me yesterday morning prior to the announcement. That was the first notice that not only the city, but anyone in deed or the state really had of, of the expansion need, so. So it was an opportunity that really didn't avail itself of us, and quite honestly, the, you know, six hundred additional jobs by twenty-twenty-five, we could absorb that. We have employers in the community, like US Bank, like Turkey Valley Farms, like Avera, that have added and are at that level, perhaps even more. But the difficult part, and Craig, you hit on this well, is at what level are those employees? And, and absorbing six hundred positions that are entry-level wages that likely will have housing challenges in the community and outside the community, that's our challenge, is, is that housing availability for, you know, those, those workers that are, and we see the sign out in front of the plant, thirteen to eighteen dollars an hour. So that's twenty-five thousand dollars a year is a lot. You know, that's a, that's a difficult housing choice, so, and likely would involve more subsidized housing than certainly we have available in the community. So first, that's probably one of the considerations as they were doing their site evaluation that they looked at was available housing for entry-level workers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just add one thing to that, because I think you're, you're spot on, and, and, and that's the, that's the path, the message that I was hoping to convey. The other thing that we have to do is we have to make sure that we put forward a positive voice that we are to steal South Dakota. We're open for business, too, but we've got a tougher hill to climb because we have to remain competitive in the tax and the, and the incentives market, and that's why we need to be together with the county so that we don't have episodes when we're offering TIF and, and other things where we're getting pushed back from our partners instead of buying. And so that's part of the dialogue, that we need to make sure that we're all pushing forward positively for development in the area, or decide we don't want to grow. Because I think that's really our choice.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Anything more?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Steve?
So my comments are going to focus around COVID and the vaccine. We've got the vaccine coming. The first round is ongoing with healthcare workers. There's a lot of misinformation out there in the public and on social media about what the vaccine does to you. I've had one shot. My arm was sore, and because I have had COVID, I think I got a little more brisk immune response, and I felt eh, a little bit under the weather the next day, but that lasted less than twelve hours. This vaccine will not, under any circumstances, make one sterile. It's not going to affect fertility in young people when it comes on. You're not, you're not getting any chips implanted into you by the government, I assure you. This is a different type of vaccine. It's an mRNA vaccine. We don't have time to go into the biochemistry of it, so I'm going to defer that for now. I'm happy to answer questions if people come to me, but I strongly recommend getting this vaccine. It is the only way we're going to get back to normal, where we don't need to wear these things, and we can get back to the way things used to be. It's vaccine, people, and when you look at historically, the biggest forward motion, things that have happened in medicine are public toilets, public sewers, and vaccines. And that's what has saved more lives than even antibiotics. So when we have these big things that come on, and they come on about every hundred years, and if we can get a vaccine, then take the vaccine, please. There's really no contradiction to it, no contraindications unless you're allergic to it, and, you know, and those people, you'll be, there's a screening process that we do, and, and we watch you for fifteen, twenty minutes after the vaccine, and when the public is able to get it, and that depends on the state allocating the vaccines to us, just consider getting it. And if you have any questions or hesitancies, ask your providers, ask public health nurses. Just, that's all I can say.
Thank you, Steve, and also thank you for sharing your expertise on the council. That's really a asset that we have.
I appreciate it.
Don, we're turning to you next.
I have nothing, no.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Craig stole my thunder, because I actually called him first about that, but I do really support that, and other than that, I do have nothing. And Dr. Meister, I'm glad to know I'm not going to go sterile from the vaccine. Thank you for clarifying that.
So it won't reverse sterility, will it?
No.
Good, okay.
Russ, I'm on to you now, so.
I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And John?
Just the only thing to add to this discussion is, you know, we've seen the, the ending of the Light of the Night that was over in Independence Park. I hope many of you had a chance to get through that. There was a lot of people visiting Marshall on account of it. Very nice setup, very well done. The weather cooperated very well. I think fortunately from the city, that was never really cold enough that anybody had to drive the paths, so most, everybody was walking the path and had an opportunity to get out there several nights, being close by, and just thank you to the hospice, Prairie Home Hospice, for doing that, and the cooperation of the city and many other partners in putting that on. They've had really great days to have it, and now great days to manage to get their lights back, so.
Thank you, John. From my part. From my part, um, uh, let me go through um, some kind of, because it's the first meeting of the year, I'm gonna briefly hit on about ten, ten items and then in the future, we'll likely have more discussion on any of these, uh, so I'm not gonna go into too much detail. Um, the, let me first kind of tie off of John, your your input on Light Up the Night. Uh, I agree, that was uh, very well done, very well attended, the weather was uh, perfect for viewing the lights. The um, it also pointed out, uh, what we also know is that the condition of the trails in Independence Park really do need um, attention, that they were installed with uh, Independence Park was being developed in the late nineteen eighties, it don't have a base under them and they have and many times wore out and in fact, the, some of the uh, most worn areas were the areas of uh, where the, on the backside where the uh, the lighting trail would go, so. And I know that's on our list of capital projects in the future, but it did really call the attention to that and that may actually, I know we also are um, discussing in our CIP, the paving of the back parking lot, we may wanna sub, sub that out for repair of the trails. Other things I, you know, just kinda hit on some, some big items earlier, I referred to the hundred and fiftieth and I think we will. You know, that's coming up next year, so we're gonna have to get serious about some of the planning of it this year. Um, as I mentioned, I think we need a council liaison to that, that planning group, but I think I would like to kind of put out a public plea and maybe we could have something on our social media also kind of requesting, are there individuals in the community that have interest in serving on this uh, this effort to uh, uh, kind of plan the celebration of a hundred and fiftieth. Earlier, I also mentioned the uh, comprehensive plan, that we need some liaison to that, uh, to that consultant selection. But the comprehensive plan and involvement of kind of all the boards and commissions, I think will be important for the um, comprehensive plan development. So as earlier, when we were talking about the liaisons of different boards and commissions, I think one message I would like council members to take to uh, back to the boards and commissions like is uh, what is that board of commissions input to the comprehensive plan, or in other words, in the next five to ten years, what, what is important to include in the comprehensive plan that would be relevant to the responsibilities of that board and commission? Thirdly, I would say, uh, you know, a, a pending um, um, big issue that we have in the community is the uh, inevitability of Emerald Ashmore affecting our uh, tree population and I know both our park superintendent as well as the American Core Volunteer uh, have been working hard on ash tree replacement policy that will be coming forward. Um, but that will be kind of a multi-year of uh, replacement policy, I think would uh, be moves the city to maybe get a head start before Emerald Ashmore uh, does show up because it will kill every ash tree in town and there's a high percentage, especially in some neighborhoods of green ash trees. Um, fourth, I would say the Aquatic Center, um, you know, we, we would kind of almost, we put this on hold once COVID started, but that doesn't eliminate the need that we have for um, a replacement plan for our aquatic center. So I think we, we need to kind of restart in twenty twenty-one. What direction are we, are we going with that? Are there opportunities for collaboration with other entities, including the YMCA? Are we better off replacing it where, where it's at? And um, kind of to reinforce what should be the sound decision. Of course, our focus in the last couple of years was on other major projects, whether it's the wastewater plant, the water treatment plant and replacement of City Hall, I think as we, those projects are nearing completion, the next project, the next big deal will be the Aquatic Center. Next on my list, I had, you know, economic growth activity that's all already been referenced in in terms of, you know, what do we have for opportunities for collaboration so that we can have success? Next on the list is that we'll need to address and Dennis, I'm gonna look at you at um, giving leadership to this also along with Public Works is our need for some annexation, I mean, we, utilities reported that uh, MRES is uh, purchased property with the intent of reserving that for a future gasification uh, uh, generation plant, but in the meantime, it would likely would have a solar field that would be developed on there. Uh, so we'll need to address that annexation adjacent to North Seven. Also, uh, related to development and perhaps housing, the Block eleven development, I know Jimmy referenced that earlier about, you know, that's, that got kind of put on hold, you know, uh, what, what's the status of that? And then finally, the uh, I would say two other things, one is the kind of leadership development in the community as we look to not only the hundred and fiftieth, but also beyond that. You know, the, some years ago, the Chamber of Commerce had a nice program on Leadership Academy and it probably would be nice to reinvigorate that type of a program as we look to perhaps Leadership twenty twenty-five or beyond that time. And then finally, uh, two other items, the um, one, the uh, the focus on welcoming in the community and inclusion and retention of families in the community uh, that they feel uh, welcomed and comfortable and safe in the community, that they will stay in the community and be contributing to not only the community, but the workforce. And that's one of the challenges and one of the opportunities for the Diversity and Inclusion slash Human Rights Commission um, that we introduced this evening. And then the last thing on my list is uh, not only the housing needs, but also addressing safe housing, safe rental. So as I think about twenty twenty-one, I think those are all things that that are on my list and in likely council members have other uh, may have additional goals on, on their list, but I think we have a lot of opportunity to work uh, for this community coming up in the next year. So with that, I think I probably should stop, take a breath and then um, um, turn to the next agenda item, which would be staff reports, uh, starting with City Administrator Sharon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a follow-up to Block eleven. We uh, had two development companies interested in Block eleven, it did take a pause in twenty twenty somewhat due to COVID. But also uh, due to the fact that the preference for the developers is that they have a tenant anchor, an anchor to the site who could then um, kind of spur at your development, so having a kind of a at least one tenant confirmed to enhance the development or to get it going is important. And I also wanna add that one of the um, developers that was interested in Block eleven, we have now um, sent them to um, interest into seeking out Shopko, so. Um, not saying we're losing focus on Block eleven, but we do feel that Shopko, this is staff now saying this is also just as critical um, as Block eleven. And uh, the opportunity might, might be greater in terms of timing for Shopko versus Block eleven. That's just an update on, on that, we uh, we certainly will make it a priority. And uh, it, we could go so as far as even the issue and new RFP for it, if you wanted to seek out greater interest, that's something to think about. Wanna comment a little bit on economic development in addition to what was talked about from CJ Schwan's. Um, and the mayor did a good job kind of explaining the communication that we had at the city and the state for the uh, recent announcement, um, but I do wanna let uh, you know, as um, as a council, that I did have a brief conversation with the CEO of Schwan's Home Services, so that's the the uh, original kind of parent company that, that broke separate from CJ and uh, they have a hundred plus employees in Marshall. Uh, and his comment to me was that they are gonna be a long-term tenant in the Schwan's headquarters here in Marshall. And uh, the, you know, they're looking at uh, doing some remodeling of that office space as well, so. At least uh, um, just wanna share that news from the Schwan's Home Services side and the communication I got um, from him. And uh, to talk a little bit about uh, competitiveness um, with South Dakota and maybe some other states. Um, certainly, we have some challenges there, um, but we also exceed in a number of areas that's possibly uh, communicating and marketing ourselves, um, corporate income tax maybe higher. But other tax rates are not as high, um, we do not tax the same on machinery and equipment as South Dakota does. And I think that sometimes is lost, um, and I know that during uh, the COVID crisis uh, from South Dakota to Minnesota, there was a lot of sharing of resources and I think Minnesota assisted South Dakota a number of occasions with uh, with the COVID pandemic um, between the hospital systems here. I think that should be shared, but um, the Southwest Regional Development Commission uh, did initiate a regional competitiveness task force. So there's a representation of city and county uh, groups and they plan on meeting next Wednesday to kind of start that off, so I know that that's a passion for a number of those people that are on that committee and and hopefully we can uh, work towards some solution as a region in addition to Mine County and the city. And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Questions for Sharon? If not, Jason?
Nothing major to report, um, I'll just let everyone know that we are getting some interest in the comp plan now that the request for proposals is out there. Uh, so that's good, we've uh, had some conversations with some interested parties. Um, and I would just note that we've got some new material up on our website underneath the engineering banner. Um, I don't know if I've announced that to the council yet, but our CIP is listed out there along with a five-year improvement map. Um, sidewalk policy will go up there as well soon, so we're throwing information up on the website. And we've also got a new Public Works newsletter that we've uh, should be up now too, so, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor, a few comments. Um, Councilmember Schaefer, I believe the uh, the housing unit you were referring to earlier, you couldn't think of the name out on London Road, I think that's the unique opportunities facilities out there, they have completed second phase. I'm waiting for some final documents from them verifying their expenses that they put into that. And that will, that will uh, trigger the second, the finalizing second phase certificate of completion and the TIF note will start generating payment back to them of taxes over the years. And then that will also trigger the beginning of Phase Three, it was originally set up for three thirty-six units facilities, so. Yeah, I, I just happened to drive by the other day and there's lots of cars out there, I think it, I don't know if they're full occupancy, but they may very well be occupying both Phase One and Two. And then with
And it, it does really look nice too. It looks really nice.
And then with the action HRA took tonight, we'll move towards the closings on the sale of the property that we proved tonight, that the Border States facility and also the, the title work has been done for the purchase of property by Action Manufacturing, actually the, the business is now Best Topsoil LLC. Where they're moving their landscaping out there, Best Topsoil, so. We'll work, I'll work for, they have a local attorney and we'll finalize that here shortly.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dennis. Um, we'll move then to the remaining items, which includes the administrative uh, report, which was updated this afternoon with the EDA. Um, you have the information items as well as a listing of upcoming meetings, is there anything else to come forward at this meeting?
Mr. Mayor, just a question for Dennis, uh, and I hate to be a thorn in his backside, but, cause I know they haven't done any, haven't played any hockey. How are we coming on the Maha Agreement?
It is still with Maha and I believe they have requested that we just wait until they start activities again. I, I don't know, they, they've got the agreement with them right now.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig, Craig, to adjourn discussion. If not, by voice, vote all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you.